Good evening, everybody. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the South Haven City Council. It is Monday, December the 6th, 2021. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The invocation this evening is going to be given by Pastor Curry Picard of Hope Church. And good evening Pastor Curry.
Good evening. Let's pray. My Father in Heaven, hallowed be your name. The kingdom come and your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. May this passion be that which guides all thoughts, words, and decisions all discussion made here this night. Help those who deliberate to be receptive to your wisdom, seeking first your kingdom and your righteousness. We thank you, Lord, for our city council and staff for their willingness to be servants for their selfless giving of time and energy for the welfare of our community. Knowing that criticism often comes, help them to take from it what is helpful and forgive and forget what is unjust and unkind. And amid all the pressures brought upon them and in all the decisions they must make, may they ever hear your still, small voice and follow you. Since it's from the heart that all our beliefs and actions flow, turn their hearts to you so that their hearts will be filled with whatever is true, noble, right, pure, lovely, and admirable. So, Lord, now bless them. Make your face shine upon them. Be gracious to them. Turn your face towards them and grant them your peace. I pray this in the name of him who taught us to pray, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, if you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Was better with the Girl Scouts last week, I'm just saying. Uh, roll call, please. Megan?
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Chris Campbell.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
Steve Schlock.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Latisha Wilkins.
Here.
Scott Smith.
Here.
Make a motion to excuse Steve Schlock.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Schlock. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, he is excused. That takes us to the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, it is approved. Next, we will see, have an update from our Van Buren County Commissioner, Ms. Gail Patterson-Gladney. Good evening, Gail.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to give you some information about what's some of the highlights from the county. I don't, I'm sure you know Nick Culp and Mick Medow from Energy. They were able to give a tour for myself and some of the Palisades Community Advisory Panel members who had not been able to have a chance to tour the plant before. It was also informational meeting to give them more information. There's going to be a, next year, a meeting of all the CP, CAP members so that we can discuss and ask questions about the closure, which will take place next year. And, um, let's see. Okay, also, the ARPA funds, that's another big thing that I've been mentioning before, which the county got about four, well, will receive a total of $14.6 million. We received half of that, and there are some requests that we've already approved. The first one I wanted to mention is the Five West Main Street in Hartford. That's been approved for $75,000 to stabilize that building, and that building's owned by the county, and we wanted to make sure that that could be stabilized. And it's a tax foreclosed property and is in danger of collapsing if repairs were not made. A request from the county administrator for essential workers' premium pay. Sorry. Previously, many essential workers for the county received a payment from the state, but there were 148 employees who did not, and they will now receive each of them $1,000 for, from the ARPA funds. There's a request also that was approved by the county administrator to use ARPA funding to recover the revenue lost by the county because of COVID-19. And the county's auditors determined the loss to a total of $4,035,052. And that will be transferred to the county's general fund from the ARPA fund. There was another request by the county administrator to use the ARPA funds to purchase an emergency announcement system for three county buildings because there's no alarm system in those buildings. And the cost of the system is about $120,000. Right now, we are getting more requests in, and there has been a request a lot, from a lot of people, for broadband expansion in the county. So, we're going to be seeing if we can slow down a little. It seems like when you have 14 million to spend, it would take a long time, but it doesn't. So, so what, well, the request has been to set aside a certain amount of money for, just for broadband, and see what monies we may get from the federal government, too, so we can put those together. So, we are looking at that. Every Tuesday, second Tuesday, and the fourth Tuesday are the ARPA meetings, and they're open to the public. You can go on Zoom to look at those or come in and to Paw Paw, to the meetings in person. And then, the specialty court grants. The State Court Administrative Office has awarded Van Buren County approximately $650,000 for the operations of a specialty courts. And I just wanted to mention that. The last item is a grant from the Department of Justice for $150,000 to assist the county in its efforts to operate remotely because of the COVID-19. And that was approved, the application to that grant was approved through, and it's the grants through the Michigan State Police. Do you have any questions? No?
Any questions?
Okay, well, thank you for your time.
Sounds good. Thanks, Gail, appreciate it. That takes us to the consent agenda items A through E.
I'll make a motion to approve consent items A through E.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call.
Arnold.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. New business, city council will be asked to receive a special informational report regarding the Downtown Development Authority, or the DDA, as it's known. And we have our outstanding director, Sue, who's here to update us. So, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. According to the Tax Increment Financing Act, Act 57 of 2018, the DDA is required to hold two informational meetings every year. These meetings are just to let you know what our goals are and how we're progressing along. There are, there's no voting taking place at these meetings. We held our first meeting in November at the DDA Board Meeting, and then the second one will be tonight. It'll be a short presentation of just to let you know what we're doing. I'd really like to start off, though, with this meeting to let you know what the DDA's mission statement is. The Downtown Development Authority is to be a leader in helping to fulfill the city of South Haven municipal plan through planning, funding, and development of projects within the DDA district, which promote, encourage, and contribute to overall economic growth and development of the community. So, in 2020, the DDA set their priority list. They will be reviewing that in 2022 in February. We're going to relook at that list and set our new priorities. So, there were four set. One was the downtown public restroom improvements. Another one was improvement of existing parking and construction of additional parking, Broadway street scape improvements, and ice rink improvements. So, just to kind of show you what some of the progress that we've made with our priorities, I just have here a little bit of a list. If you saw the presentation last year, pretty much with the restroom improvements, this is a little bit of what we showed last year. I will say the one item that's new on this list is the last item for future projects. It's the restroom additions and improvements at Dykman Park, which is set to begin in 2022. So, one of our other priorities, of course, was approving existing downtown parking. So, parking is something that is really top of mind with the DDA. So, this list just kind of shows you overall throughout the years what attempts we have made with parking. We have made some past attempts by looking at other potential sites. And so, again, what's new this, on this list is future projects. The DDA Board has requested to get a traffic study, parking traffic study, done. So, we're hoping to kind of bring that to the Board in January, just to see if they want to fund that study. Another item that we have been looking into is community shared parking agreements, maybe with a couple of our churches. They have also parking that they offer to the public, and we're, we've been having some conversation about maybe some shared promotion of saying that's available parking. Some of the other projects that we have talked about that is on our priority list, of course, this is all dependent on funding availability. You know, we, we make our priorities, but we know we can't fund them all at one time. So, Broadway street scape improvements, we do have our planned, we, our design, we need to create a capital improvement plan for the future on that. The same is ice rink improvements. We purchased the ice rink in 2003, but we also know that in years to come, we may need to make some improvements with that as well. So, not only with our priorities, but the DDA does also fund general street repair and street scape, storm and sanitary sewer improvements, and water supply system improvements. And this list is a list, just a brief list for you, but I really encourage, if you want to see more in depth, we do, I do have that on the website, under the DDA webpage. I did update everything today. You will be able to see what those projects are, what we funded, and the year it was funded. So, not only does the DDA help fund projects within the city, we also set our priorities, but we also do some community projects and make investments within our community, such as the Friends Goodwill Splash Pad and the Growing Our Art, so those are those art sculptures around town. Our bike racks, I'm sure many of you saw those beautiful bike racks this year. And then, we're going to get another set for more bikes next year that we have funded with the CVB. And then, our beautiful holiday street lighting, of course, we help fund that as well, and then to, we helped also fund the Wi-Fi access within the city. So, the DDA does have some debt service funds. Of course, when we have projects, we have some debt that we need to help pay for. So, I've listed a few of them here and the years that they will expire, and we do have some still out that, that we're still paying on. "It is the DD's ambition to build value in the community for the benefit of the community. Projects will be financed through tax increment financing, otherwise TIF, and will proceed with and initiate projects as monies are available and budget allows." And I think that's the last one, is it? Yep. So, in closing, I just want to say that the DDA Board is such a great board, they're great stewards of their budget and financing. So, we're so excited to start one of the things on our priority list this year, which is the restroom renovations at Dykman Park. And the, the great part of that is that we don't have to have any debt with that. We're able to fund that straight right out of our budget. So, we're really excited about that. We think it'll be a benefit to the city. It'll increase space, and it'll also be such a great thing when people come in and see these great new bathrooms. And that's it. Any questions? Yes.
This may sound a little out of the box, but I was reading an article about this new technology for signals, red lights, and you said upgrading our signals. So, the new system is where people pull up to a red light. If someone is not coming the other way, it stays green. The only time it turns red in the opposing direction, if someone has come in the other direction. So, the point of the article made, and it extrapolated across the country, if everyone had that kind of a signal, it would be millions and millions of gallons of gasoline saved, tons of pollution saved, and a lot of time for residents and people traveling would be saved, all because you would never have to stop if nobody's coming the other way. I can't tell you how many times, I travel a lot. How many times I sit at a red light and I look around and there's not a car anywhere in sight, and I have to sit and sit and sit. So, is, I don't know what they cost. Is that even a consideration?
Well, Joe, thanks for bringing that up. I think seasonally, too, with our traffic, right? There's times when we're very busy, and there's times when we don't have a lot of traffic going on. So, I would say that the DDA would welcome any, anybody to bring that to the Board, to see how they would, if they'd be interested in that. That would be something that we could definitely bring to the Board if someone was to present that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. I'll just say that, as I talk to the merchants, they are extremely complimentary of you and just your presence downtown.
Oh, thank you.
Well done downtown, so.
Thank you.
That's all I got. Thanks. Thanks for the report. Have a great night. Get out of here.
You, too. Thanks.
Appreciate it. Okay. City Council will be asked to consider the following actions regarding the Clean, Renewable, and Efficient Energy Act, 295 of 2008. First, we would like to introduce an ordinance to change Section 86-36 to remove the energy optimization surcharge for residential, commercial, and industrial customers from the City of South Haven Code of Ordinances. So, first, I'll take a motion for that one.
I make a motion to open a public hearing on the introduction of an ordinance to change Section 86-36 to remove the energy optimization surcharge for residential, commercial, and industrial customers from the City of South Haven Code of Ordinances.
I'll second. Are we setting the public hearing for our next meeting, though?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the next motion.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, first, we're just introducing, then we'll, then we'll set the public hearing at the next one, so.
All right. I'll redo my motion then. I'll just make a motion, introduce an ordinance to change Section 86-36 to remove the energy optimization surcharge for residential customers, residential, commercial, and industrial customers from the City of South Haven Code of Ordinances.
I'll second that.
Okay. So, motion to second. So, Kate, who's got this? Is that you, Bill?
This will be Bill coming in to kind of explain why we have this, why it's sunsetting, and what does this mean for our ratepayers.
Thank you, Kate, Your Honor, City Council. As, as was stated earlier, this act is sunsetting. We've noted about it for quite some time and have been in several meetings, actually, with the MPPA. So, a lot of municipalities are picking different courses to stay with it, and some, a lot of them our size are deciding actually not to do it. This was actually, as of 2008, we were forced to do it, and that's why it was on the bill. It was a good program, but, but then again, it's, 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 it's kind of wise, I don't know how much it actually, I'm sure it did reduce some of our load on the system, but not as much, I think, as originally it was intended. So, I brought it in front of the, the Board of Public Utilities, asked them if they wanted to continue on this course through the MPPA or just to have it removed from the ordinance, and the Board of Public Utilities decided actually to have this removed, which would be a decrease in rates. It would, actually. I can't say in the future that this act won't come again, but at that time, it'll probably be forced, and we'll do what we did last time, hire somebody and enact and put it in place. So, there's, a lot of these programs, where, for example, if you bought new appliances, if you bought energy efficiency ones, the rebates, so we were basically paying into a pot. Someone was managing the funds for us, and they would distribute it out. So, as of, as at the end of this year, we won't have that contract anymore, and we won't, and the ratepayers won't be paying for this.
So, we could take our savings and buy energy efficient products on our own.
We could decide to do that.
I'm just saying. Do what you, do what you want with your money. That's fair. All right, so, that's a good update. Any public questions on this? Nothing. Council questions? Pretty straight ahead. All right, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, it's approved, oh, it's not approved, but we were good there. Next, Council will be asked to set a public hearing on the proposed ordinance to occur at the City Council's December 20, 2021 regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing date to occur on December 20th, 2021, at our next regular meeting.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second, what we just talked about. Public questions, council questions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That's set. Fun stuff. City Council will be asked to approve the following special event applications. First, we have special event 2021-35, the Rotary Pancake Breakfast, to be held on July the 3rd, 2022, from 6:30 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. at the Huron Street Pavilion.
I'll make a motion to approve special event 2021-35, Rotary Pancake Breakfast, to be held July 3rd, 2022, from 6:30 to 1:00 at the Huron Street Pavilion.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. It's the pancake breakfast.
That's correct.
We all know what it is. Come get your food. Eat, eat breakfast.
Yes, sir.
A couple Rotarians are here, so we can, we'll just encourage you to come and eat. How's that sound? Public questions? Council questions? We got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's approved. Next, special event 2021-37, Alvan's Firecracker Furry 5K to be held on July the 2nd, 2022, from 7:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m., starting at Kids Corner Park, heading to Maple Street and going one block to the Van Buren Trail.
Make a motion to approve special event 2021-37, the Alvan Firecracker Furry 5K, to be held on July 20th, July 2nd, 2022, from 7:00 until noon.
I'll second.
All right, motion, second. Any updates on this one?
No, this is the same event they've been doing, again, starting at Kids, Kids Corner Park, going the one block down, and then jumping on the Calhavan Trail. There's no request for city services, but this is a good time to walk or run with your pet, if you so choose, as a fundraiser for Alvan.
I agree. It's a great program, good organization. All right, very good. Public questions, comments? It's quiet today. Council? Nothing. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, it's approved. Next, we will be receiving an update, some feedback, regarding the feedback on the Broadway Street Lane Diet Project, completed in November of 2019, and consider next steps for staff's direction. Mr. Hunter.
It's legal to have Mr. Hunter kicking off his, his report here. And just to give a background, this is something that council has asked for, just to get an update on. How has the implementation of the Broadway Lane Diet gone? How has it been received? And so, Bill has undertaken quite a bit of public input and put that together for your review. Bill, if you want to take that away.
Thank you, Kate, Your Honor, City Council. Included in your packet, I included a whole background of history. I mean, it's kind of like, you go back, we've been discussing this since 2012, so possibly before that, this thing has been planned from a, from having a traffic study done, from Progressive A&amp;E to, and it seemed like there was some timeframe, maybe about four years, until actually we started doing more outreach, but numerous public meetings. So, as Kate stated about a year ago, directed by City Council to get public feedback on, from, well, the public and see, what do they think about, how is it working? What, what do they think about this? So, I did a month-long of DPW after-hours, and it was, I thought it was, had quite a bit of input, either during that timeframe from 5:00 to 7:00, also received emails and phone calls. And as you can see, just from there, it was, this is split. No matter which way you look at it, people love it, people hate it. And it seems like there's the same, there was a, a constant, when I would receive a phone call or discuss, or have a discussion with somebody, it was, they focused on the bikes. And I would try to, well, it's about traffic calming, but after a while, I just kind of just sat there and listened, took the information. So, like I said, it's, it's a 50/50. I don't think it's, I did some adjustments, I did take one, where what if I actually took out the, the residents out of there? So, I did a little change there, but it, fractions of a percentage, really, it's one side or the other, really. I, I don't really receive a lot of phone calls on this. I receive more phone calls on the timings of the lights than I do on the lane diet. I, I really do. So, I think a lot of, my perception, just driving it every day and being right down the road, I think a lot of people are getting used to it. I really think they are. But I'm here to get the city council's feedback on this or direction on where to proceed from here.
Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah. My question would be, what do the police think? What is the chief or the officer in the back think of the lane diet? Has it helped two things? Has it helped safety? Because that was the big concern of the residents. And secondly, has it helped or hindered traffic, especially in the summer? I'd just like to know factually, as best we can, what are the answers to those two issues?
I got that. I can, I can ask them to get the input on that.
We can. We can also see how many reports of our accidents that have occurred because of the lane diet or how many have occurred since we've done the modifications. I think we all saw what happened to the chamber a couple of weekends ago. But, again, that's where we're trying to calm the traffic and slow it down. Now, that may have occurred maybe after 2:00 in the morning, and there may be other factors as to why that vehicle went into the chamber, but they should, we can reach out to the, to the police chief and see what kind of reasoning records we have of any accidents, and I can update council at our next meeting.
Yeah, it's definitely, it slows it down. I, having driven it before and driven now, it slows it down. And I mean, we still have to remember, to your point, we didn't, it's not a bike path project. It was a consolidation of lane projects. We threw bike lanes in. So, comments I've heard, mainly have been, like, we, we had some good comments just from really shop owners, saying they didn't really see impediment of traffic. They were concerned about the fact that the current bike path was difficult to kind of once see it. Like, in some cities, they like have painted that a different color, like green or something, so it's clear that that's the bike path. You know, one person said, you even need to designate a bike path? Could you just have cars and no cars, and then you could, they could be wherever they wanted to be? Because that was, one concern is they're sort of sandwiched between, they're close versus, that's just feedback again. So, could you change color? And like I said, that the question was just, you get what I'm saying? Like, there's traffic, and then there's just no cars. It could be a bike, it could be whatever, so. But, I still say it's done. It's, I think it's what it's supposed to do. I think it's easier for pedestrians to cross traffic, it's easier to cross two lanes and a turning lane than five. End of story. What do you got?
And my question was going to be, and it kind of dovetails into what the mayor was saying. I know when I served the first time, and we agreed to go with the lane diet, there were plans to make it more permanent, including like an island specifically between the high school and McDonald's, because there's always students running across the street there, you know, kind of a pedestrian safe way, and even talked about planting some trees in there, making a, you know, some of those. So, one of the staff recommendations is that we accept it as permanent, and then would we move forward in making those permanent kind of islands and curb bump outs to, to really get the traffic slowed down? Is that where we would head next, if that's what we choose?
I think that would be, if, if this was something that, that council would say would be a permanent, that, that would actually now be a discussion, I think, we could have with MDOT, saying now that this is working, the, this, we can do with like three lanes, what can we do, and start a discussion of maybe partnering with them, or something that where we can start looking at, what can we do to improve that and make it more permanent? Like bump outs, like you were just discussing, trees.
We probably could.
Like the island, for example, it's, right now, it's just a, it's just a paint, but now if you made a more permanent island, you would.
Yeah, a curbed. And we can just. Yeah, a curved. And it certainly, you know, help to establish more of the crosswalks for pedestrians would be more prominent and probably safer, even, even safer for pedestrians. Yeah. Okay.
That's a good question.
Bill, I remember the efforts working with the MDOT on putting this lane diet in and it seemed like it was a long time and a lot of effort. What, do you have a feel for what it'd be like timewise if, if you were to start the process to revert it back?
Well, that's a very good question. It would, goes just to process, if I was directed by city council to revert it back, I would hire, hire an engineer for it because we'd have to do a design again. Then we'd have to actually have designs preliminary, but then pull a permit because my experience with MDOT, even if they do a courtesy review, it's all, it's all based on if you pulled the permit and submitted the plans. And they could, and I just want city council to be prepared, because this is not our road. They could say, this is working just fine. And that could happen. I just don't, I just want to manage our expectations, I guess, just in case. But to answer your question, it'd probably be a year or more from now, I would say.
Okay. Good questions. Anybody else have any other questions, comments?
I'll just say I'm inclined to leave the lane diet in place. It's my, it's my thought.
I would agree. I would concur. I think it's working. I think it's main function of making pedestrian traffic better, safer to cross has been accomplished.
I know that I've heard from the people that live in Ward 2 and they always felt crossing five lanes of Broadway or four lanes of Phoenix, they felt really boxed in that there, while there are some public parks in Ward 2, none of them have playground equipments. If you're taking your kids for a walk to a playground, you're, you know, playing a game of Frogger with your life at risk to try and get across those lanes. And so they certainly liked the three better than the five.
I'd agree. And I've had no trouble navigating the traffic and it has slowed us down. I know I, I've slowed down. So, so okay. Anybody else want to weigh in? Like it? Don't like it? Working?
I have mixed feelings about it. I've only had two times that someone was going about five miles an hour. I think they were looking for a road. And I've had maybe two or three times where people pulled off to the side. I've had a car that was empty, there was no one in it, like they parked and left. But other than that, I think you could put as many signs as you want. You're, you're still going to have a couple of people that won't see it. I mean, there could be a curb there that'll bounce over the curb and still park. So I've, it hasn't slowed me down that much. I drive, well, almost 20,000 miles in just the town this year, according to my truck. But it's not been too much of a problem. The summer has not been bad. It's usually in the fall is where I see it's slower, just because someone's looking for a road or, you know, they can't distinguish something. So.
But it's nothing but too bad. Good.
I have mixed emotions about it. I've heard quite a few residents say they do not like it, mainly because it, you have some people driving slow and you have some people driving fast. I've had my own personal experiences of almost being ran over going down. And then I've had an experience of someone just going entirely too slow and holding up traffic, someone driving five miles per hour. So, and honestly about the bikes, I, I have not seen any, any bikes. So if it's about the bikes, I don't know. So I, I don't know. I guess it works, but I don't know if I'm, I hear a lot of people saying we just need to go back, maybe slow the traffic down, but the speed limit or something, but just the lane diet. I really think that we need the four lanes. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. I also like to remind people that Bailey in front of the hospital also used to be four, and we shrunk that one down. No one ever talks about that one.
Broadway right in front of the, the muffler man used to be five lanes and it went to three. And people claimed, oh, on the Fourth of July in the bridge, we will never get through there. And the engineers said, no, it'll slow things down maybe 30 seconds, even on the Fourth of July. And the engineers were right.
Yeah. It's just interesting. We always forget about the hospital one, too. It wasn't. And it was again, when it first happened, I was like, well, this is terrible. It wasn't. I survived. It's just fine. But, all right. Okay. Good feedback. I think you've got your direction. Leave it alone. All right. Let's go on. City council will be asked to take these following actions regarding a proposed amendment to the Everett Park Phase 2 planned unit development. First, introduce the proposed amendment. So let's need that motion.
I'll make a motion to introduce the proposed amendment.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second. Kate, you want to walk us through those amendments?
Absolutely, sir. So we itemized in the staff report what council's being asked to do with the Everett Park planned unit development. As Mr. Sleeper knows, this has been at the planning commission level, I would say, for most of the year. It started at the, I think, the June, July, August, July, Planning Commission meeting, and then went to the August, October, it has been seen as a November, and then most recently at the December Planning Commission meeting where it was approved in its current formation. There are a number of items that are also part of the planned unit development that includes some amendments that were outlined in the staff report presented at the Planning Commission. There are seven amendments plus three, I'm sorry, three, there's seven conditions that were outlined in the staff report. One, before issuing any city permits, the applicant shall have paid all application fees, permit fees, reversible, reimbursable escrow account and other fees related to the request. Two, the site plan shall fully conform with the ordinance and all applicable city, state, county, federal statutes, rules and regulation. Three, the applicant shall comply with any stipulations by the city engineer, city fire department or other approving agencies. Four, any additional lighting shall meet the standards of section 1710 of the zoning ordinance. Five, landscaping shall be maintained on 10% of the site in accordance with section 1709 subsection 5 of the zoning ordinance. Six, all condominium lots shall be marked with a monument as provided in section 1740 subsection 6 of the zoning ordinance. And seven, the applicant shall receive a soil erosion and sedimentation permit and submit a copy of the permit to the city. There was also an amendment to the approval to add some clarifications and there was three of those. These were approved by the Planning Commission at their December 3 meeting. Number one was to grant a modification to the required yard setback for the proposed detached single-family units along St. Joseph Street, which allow the developer to continue phase two of the development with the same 15-foot setback allowed, allowed for in phase one, as opposed to the underlying setback requirement, which was 25 feet. So that was modification one. Two, that there was the, the grant, grant no modification of the parking requirements stipulated by the underlying zoning, thus subjecting the developer to the minimum parking requirements based on the use of the constructed units, which would mean, so two parking spaces per dwelling unit for multifamily uses, so duplexes and apartment style structures, two parking spaces for single-family units up to three bedrooms. So two parking require, or two parking spaces required for those three bedrooms, but each additional bedroom above that would correspond to a parking space. So I believe it's a four-bedroom house requires three parking spaces and upward. And then third, require the developer to survey, legally describe and dedicate the indicated open spaces in both phase one and proposed phase two developments, open space with legally defined and recorded conservation easements to prevent future expansions into formerly presumed open spaces as potential sites for relocated units. So that's what's being proposed here tonight. And of course, Griffin has a map here that might show you what's going to be added to the Everett Park PUD. Griffin, you want to go ahead?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. First off, I'll just say I appreciate everyone's patience for the time being as we go through some transition in the planning and zoning department. We're going to do the best we can to keep everything rolling. As you can see from the map on the screen, in these bolded areas are the areas that are included in this proposed phase two. That includes some single-family homes. I believe it's 11 single-family homes along St. Joseph Street, as long as some proposed duplexes along Everett Parkway. Really, the only other thing I would add to Kate's comments is the planning commission discussed this over several meetings. Public hearing was opened in July, held open in August, as well as in October. Some input was gathered from the public as well as provided by the planning commission that the developer, Mr. O'Connor, took into account, brought back some changes based on that feedback in the November meeting when it was originally approved. Based on that approval, staff with the assistant of, assistance of the city attorney brought it back to the planning commission in December, seeking some clarification on the intent of the original motion. After those clarifications were approved in December, it's now brought before all of you this evening and we are looking to, for introduction and then looking to schedule the public hearing for consideration on December 20th.
Good. Sounds good. Let's go public comments first. How's that sound? So any public questions or comments on this item? If so, come on up, state your name and address. You'll have up to five minutes. Good evening.
Good evening. First, I want to say Merry Christmas to all of you. I'd like to talk about the planning commission meetings on November 2nd, November 4th and the 2nd. Matt came and presented a change in the design with duplexes across the street from my house and we were allowed to have no comment. There was no comment at the meeting. Mr. Stigman was not there, but the other commissioners said you can't comment. It's going to be changed, you changed the design. It's not the final site plan. Your own ordinance says you have to have public comment. And then I brought it up again at the meeting last Thursday. It wasn't on the agenda, but I said, we never got the comment on the agenda. Okay? And there's one other item I want to speak about on the phase two especially is the parking. They got away with phase one, building, as I call them skyscrapers, 39-feet three-story houses with two parking spaces, one in a single-car garage and one in the driveway. Now, there's nothing to stop Matt and Tim and Dane from building four bedrooms in those duplexes. And right now, the way the ordinance is set up and the way it was approved at the last PC meeting and the comment from the staff, duplexes are allowed to only, are only required to have two parking spaces. I would like to get that ordinance amended so that include duplexes. There's nothing to stop the builder from putting four bedrooms or five bedrooms in a duplex. You just got to have a wider, wider lot and put in more, more bedrooms. So I would like to see that ordinance changed so that table A, item one says duplexes and single-family, anything more than three bedrooms, you have to have an additional parking space, you know, off, off-street parking for each one of the additional bedrooms. I'd like to also, I don't know how long the STR ordinance is going to be around because the state's going to maybe oversee that, but I'd like to see the same thing. It's kind of vague in the STR ordinance. It just asks on the, on the application, how many spots do you supply off-street for your parking? But in the STR ordinance, it should say you need to abide by the parking requirements indicated in section 18 of the ordinance, the one I just talked about. And another thing is, the building permits, and I probably gets into the detailed design, but on the submittal for phase two for trailside, there was no indication of the size of the buildings. Okay? All they said was going to be like the existing. Well, there are no duplexes right now in trailside phase one. And if they're planning and putting the 39-foot duplexes across the street from me, we're going to have a big fight on our hands because that is atrocious. Now, Matt was talking, or Tim was talking about putting that berm that's in there now, bringing it closer to Everett and then making it a two-story, but you still got a three-story in the back. And I can, I cannot imagine having nine, two, three-story duplexes across the street on Everett. That, that ordinance has to get changed so that they had to limit it to at least two-story. There's no other buildings higher than two-story in our development except for the three that they let get through on, on Elkenburg. The Elkenburg ones, they meet the ordinance because like I said before, you're allowed to take the average elevation. Now, the average elevation, I'm going to say when we get into detailed design, that that average elevation is going to be the elevation of Everett Street or the sidewalk or the trail, because we're going to fight having three-story buildings across the street from us. Thank you very much.
Do you a favor? Just, sorry. Just name and address. Sorry, we didn't get it.
Dan Agnello, 964 Everett Parkway. Sorry.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Griffin, do you want to make any comments regarding just the discussion that was had about duplexes or just?
The comment I can make at, at this point is that the original phase two plan that was submitted by Mr. O'Connor did not include duplexes. And based on comments from the public and the planning commission, the duplexes were brought back into the plan to more closely reflect the originally approved PUD that was approved back in 2006. So my understanding from the planning commission's discussion is that the duplexes were seen as a, as a positive asset to this development.
Okay. Building heights within our current zoning ordinance?
They're 35 feet for the residential, but Mr. Agnello is correct that they do take the average grade. So if there's a slope on the property, it's, it's an average and it's something that's been applied to every zoning district, every residential zoning district. So I understand his concerns. We can see if council wants to look and see, again, remember, we're still, we do have a zoning ordinance rewrite that's coming up. So that's something we can look at at that time.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Any other public questions? Come on up. Name and address. You'll have five minutes.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. First, did everyone get my comments? Because, Mayor, your questions indicate you did not get my comments, because I did outline the process of what was provided when in the PC process. And at the July meeting, there was no site plan per the agenda packet. And there was a change of the site plan over the duration of the time and that was not noticed. And so, you're shaking your head yes, so I'm glad you got them. Okay. And just now, tonight, when you were talking, you said it was approved in November and came back in December for clarification. So that means that November, when we were here to comment on the revised site plan, the new site plan, we were denied. We were blatantly denied. The planning commission voted, refused to take public comment. We wanted to address the townhouses. We wanted to address the setbacks. But yet tonight, it appears that only the 25-foot to 15-foot front setback was allowed. The other requests changes were not. So the height change for two and a half or 35 feet was not allowed. The lot size change would not have been allowed. So that should be clarified, if those were allowed, because it appears from the amendment discussed, though only the 25-foot front setback was allowed. In light of the errors of the notice before the planning commission, regardless of how many times they were there, the lack of having a site plan at which public was able to give a discussion, give comments, at which the planning commission held a discussion and voted on, was denied. And we were prevented from satisfied, from having our due process right at an open meeting to provide comments on a site plan on which it was voted. And the focus of the December meeting was too narrow to have any comment at that time. The delay is caused by the developers' failure to provide a timely site plan and the city's premature notice of the meetings before the final site plan was before the planning commission, for which discussion and a vote was taken. That was not cured by December. There was no notice that it was on the site plan. It was on a clarification of the vote already taken. Please start placing the residents' needs before the developers' profits. Although it's alleged that the townhouses were a benefit, it increased the density and there, and because of this, the height issue, and that height grade average can be used when the developer creates a berm. So it can be a man-made berm that increases the average, that allows the developer to make tunnel sequester, sequestering different divisions of our city. It's destroying our neighborhoods and you need to start looking at our neighborhoods. Please comply with your own zoning ordinances to notice out public hearings for the site plans only after the application is complete. Too often, it's filed in anticipation of the developer providing the site plan before the meeting and it's never available at this, it's rarely available at the zoning office after the publication, when you go to look to see the site plan. It should only be noticed after everything is completed and that's not happening routinely. If there are continued changes in a site plan, it should be re-noticed so that the public understands what's going on, so that we can protect our neighborhoods because our elected and appointed officials are not. We should have an opportunity to review the site plan that makes changes regardless of personal of personal opinions about whether it's beneficial or not. The developer bought the property with knowing what the PUD was. Over the last year, the Planning Commission and the city council have allowed this developer to destroy designated open space. Your residents, your voting constituents, saw trees leveled, birds screeching because their nests were on the ground. They should have videotaped it and made you watch it. It was gut-wrenching. And now, rather than having a tree-lined street, we have a street lined with three-story buildings that only have to have two parking spaces and have five bedrooms. This has destroyed the neighborhood.
Thank you. Griffin, I don't know if you want to make comments on just some of the...
Sure. The couple comments I guess I can make is, you know, part of the Planning Commission process is the Planning Commission giving a developer feedback, and that feedback quite often is incorporated. And during this process, staff continued to consult with legal counsel, and we're very comfortable with the noticing that it was handled appropriately in this situation. I'd also like to share that, you know, like this evening, when the public's having an opportunity to comment, the Planning Commission's motion is simply a recommendation to city council. City council this evening is introducing this topic and presumably going to schedule a public hearing, so there will be another opportunity for the public to give feedback. And at that time, city council can consider next steps, if that's considering approval or considering sending feedback back to the Planning Commission. So, I think for the public, there is still plenty of opportunity to voice comments, questions, and concerns on this project.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Hi. Nancy Nat, 125 Elkenburg. I'll keep it short, but in terms of the parking for the Phase 2 development, because a lot of these will be turned into short-term rentals, the parking will start to be on our street of Elkenburg. Right now, people can park on either side of that street, and I'm asking city council to consider changing the parking on Elkenburg, so that the overflow from these short-term rentals will not be on our street, where it's going to be a safety issue for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Nobody? Council? Questions at this time? This is just an introduction, so... Nothing? Okay. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah. To Dan's point about height, can you make it real clear and understandable for me? Because I'm not an expert in zoning. What is the current height that is allowed for a single dwelling in this town? What is the max? Is there one maximum height regardless of neighborhood?
It's 35 feet for R1A, R1B, I believe R2, but I'm not sure too much about R2, but it's 35 feet or 2.5 stories, so you cannot exceed 35 feet. The pitch may not exceed that. Now, it also depends on the type of roof you have and where that is. So, it does get right into the details.
So, 35-foot, that's what I thought. So, then my question is, any Overton development, if you put a duplex in, wouldn't that have to follow the same criteria as a single-dwelling home? Would it be any different? Wouldn't it have the same restrictions of 35-foot or not?
It would, I believe. Yes. It's in the same, it's in the district, but a planned unit development can make those modifications. No modifications, I believe, were sought in the height of the duplex. Is that correct?
What PUD are we referring to?
We're talking about the Everett Park. Are you asking a general question of duplexes?
I'm just asking in Overton right now.
Oh, Overton. I beg your pardon.
Can they build a duplex higher than 35-foot, since that's the max?
If they submitted...
I don't, well, right. They haven't submitted a plan, but I don't think that was the intent of what they were trying to do, but no, they could submit something, but I haven't seen anything. So, right now, again, you have the zoning ordinance, which designates what height can be in each district, but a planned unit development by its very nature can allow for some waivers if there's a balancing test that is conducted and the Planning Commission and the city council determine that the waivers of either height, density, parking, or any other factor or condition could be waived for a purpose. Now, again, I don't believe that there is going to be a higher than 35-foot in the duplex or by the townhouses, the for sale portion, but they have not, I don't think, have they submitted their site plan yet? I'm not sure, but they're going to. And I apologize if I'm off on some dates. I've been looking at some other items. I'm not doing the Planning Commission stuff. But, so, does that answer your question?
Kind of. Kind of, because it sounded like, listening to you, if I got this right, it should be and could be 35-foot, but there could be an exception to the rule for Overton. Because Dan has a good concern. I don't think we should make an exception for a townhouse. The whole idea of a townhouse is to get more people and more home into a square foot of property. That's the whole idea. It's not about going up higher. The only thing that should be higher, in my opinion, it's only my opinion, is the apartments. So, a townhouse duplex should be the same height as a home. And so, you're saying there's the possibility, so Dan has a legitimate concern that maybe planning and city council could approve it, but it is unlikely. Is that fair? Did I got that right?
Yes. A planned unit development can modify the underlying zoning. Yes, they can.
They can ask to have it changed.
They can ask, and...
Doesn't mean we regret it.
Right. So, I guess the answer is, kind of.
That's kind of what I said. So, Dan has a legitimate concern, then?
Yes. Mr. Agnello did raise the fact that there can be some modifications and waivers, and I believe that the applicant, the Everett Park, did apply for some, but from what I read from the minutes and the discussion at the Planning Commission, is that the Planning Commission did not find adequate reasons to give all, give permissions to all of his modifications. George, would you think, would you say that's an accurate restatement?
I would agree, yeah.
Okay. All right. We have a motion to second to introduce the proposed amendment. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is introduced. Next, we will be asked to set a public hearing to occur at city council's regular meeting on December 20, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Just need a motion second.
I think a motion to set a public hearing to occur at city council's regular meeting on December 20, 2021 at 7:00 PM.
I'll second.
All right. Motion second. I think we all know what we're talking about. We just talked about it. Any other questions? Public questions? Council questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That public meeting is set. And next, we will hear an update from our DPW director.
Item 13, sir.
Did I miss one? Oh, gosh, sorry. I was trying to get out. Sorry, Bill. Sorry. I was so excited to hear you talk, I thought I'd skip that one. Oh, this is going to crack my eyes to work, too. Here we go. City council will be asked to take the following actions regarding a proposed rezoning of parcels listed in the agenda packet on page 149. First, introduce the proposed rezoning of the listed parcels to the B2 General Business Zoning District, with the exceptions of 80-17-015-048-00 and 80-17-015-54-00, which are to be rezoned to I-1 Light Industrial. Start with that one.
I'll make a motion to introduce the proposed rezoning of the parcels, as the mayor listed, to B2 General Business Zoning District, with the exception of the two parcels, which would be zoned to I-1 Light Industrial.
I'll second.
All right. We've got that motion and that second Kate's issue, or is this...
Yes. So, this is, Griffin will be helping me out here, but we are rezoning a number of the parcels that the city will be taking, well, that will be incorporated into the city as of January 1. Once we take these parcels into the city, we have to assign a zoning designation, and that's what this is attempting to do. Griffin?
Thank you. Exactly what Kate said, as city council likely can recall, you recently approved a 425 agreement with South Haven Township that is scheduled to take place at the beginning of the new year. Between now and then, city staff and council are working on a number of items, including consideration of the creation of a new commercial rehab district in that area, as well as consideration of the rezoning of those parcels. As you all likely recall, this 425 agreement between the township and the city turns over planning and zoning authority, among other things, for the above-listed parcels. Consequently, a zoning district needs to be assigned to these parcels to ensure orderly and regulated development under the city's zoning ordinance. The recommended zoning districts came from the future land use map in the City of South Haven's master plan. Staff also proposed some alternatives to the Planning Commission that were considered at last week's meeting, and the Planning Commission ultimately voted to recommend that a majority of the parcels be rezoned to the B2 General Business District, which is consistent with most of the rest of that Broadway, La Grange, and M140 corridor, for the exception of two parcels that would be rezoned to I-1 Light Industrial, which are adjacent to other industrial-zoned parcels. I believe it's the WR Grace facility right there. Happy to do what I can to answer any questions.
Council, questions? I think you all know what we're doing. Okay. I think it's clear to us. Oh, go ahead. Got it?
Makes sense.
Okay. Public questions? Nothing? All right. Motion to second to introduce the proposed rezoning. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next, we will be asked to set a public hearing to occur at city council's regular meeting on December 20, 2021 at 7:00 PM.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing to occur at city council's next meeting on December 20, 2021 at 7:00 PM.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any other questions from the public? Council? Motion to second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, Bill Hunter, our DPW director, which I will just say the wind is howling at like 100 miles an hour, and my lights have not flickered.
Oh, knock on wood.
That's a good thing.
It's amazing. It's amazing. So, thank you very much for keeping my lights on.
Thank you. Your honor, city council, today's going to be a presentation, as it did last year, of the end-of-the-year report for the Department of Public Works. The first slide you see is the Department of Work organization chart. We have actually 39 full-time employees, 10 seasonal, and one part-time. We are, this organizational that you're seeing right here, I believe next year will be different for city council. At this, we're not talking about any changes that would cost the city council any money. This would be a cost, this would be a neutral change, but we're actually looking at taking a position and splitting it apart, and part of that is just to improve actually customer service. And some of it is just, if you have too many direct contacts, one leader does, you tend to lose things. There's always, it always tells you, if you have more than seven, you lose something. So, we're looking at actually one department splitting it up and improving actually some of the flow. Part of that, too, actually, some of the organization is we couldn't actually get enough seasonal people last year. I say 10 seasonal, and we only had three of eight, so we were actually down five. I'm actually looking at maybe doing some more mowing on a contract side, taking actually those seasonal people, and maybe focus more on the downtown, maybe tree grates, some more of a beautification. I'd like to say putting the shine back in South Haven, that kind of thing, because the downtown, it's a great, the downtown looks great, but a blink of an eye, and it's going to start looking that way. And I think, start looking, so I want to start concentrating maybe on, maybe cleaning the sidewalks a little bit more, maybe things of that nature. So, that's our, but just, next year, you might see actually a different organization chart. So, next chart you see is a list of the city total assets. We have $21.4 million worth of assets. Now, these assets don't include, what you don't see here, our Shaw's assets, which will be in a different slide. That's your water plant, wastewater plant. Also, what you don't see on here actually is the bridge. The bridge is an asset, but it's not showing on here, because it actually falls underneath your roadways, which that's not listed on here as well. So, to say this is the only assets we have, we have more assets, but it's, but it's kind of hard to quantify that, but this is what we have listed actually in our assurance. So, next slide, we're going to start with actually the engineering department. And what you're seeing right here is actually some sidewalk projects that we had done. We budget every year $200,000 just to redo sidewalks. Staff takes a lot of time, once we get reports, is to actually put a plan together. We try not to, we only want to replace street, trip hazards. So, sometimes when you're looking through a sidewalk project, and you say, "Bill, why are these old sections here?" It's because they're not trip hazards, and that's what we're trying to just focus on. Plus, accessibility. You can see in that quadrant over to your right, in the top, top two pictures you show is of ramps before actually they were done. You can see actually that they didn't meet ADA compliance, and the bottom ones actually shows the revision to them. It lessens the grade, and you're able to actually make it to where, and I think, I believe it or not, yes, you can see that picture up to the top right. So, wheelchair actually would have had to go over actually a curb before, and then that was a curb on the other side, so we were actually, made it actually accessible after we were done. Next slide, you actually see some painting, pavement marking. Last year was the first year, actually, we did, we contracted out the centerline striping. Used to have just city staff do that, so they would concentrate on the centerline striping, but then we would never get to the crosswalks. We would never get to the stop bars. So, I had a contractor go and come in and do that for about 20 grand, and now staff was able to focus on crosswalks, because that's really, I think, where the focus needs to be, improving the safety of the pedestrians crossing. There is a requirement actually with the, with the Michigan Manual for Uniform Traffic Code and Devices actually, is to paint them and have a certain reflectivity, so I want staff to focus on that. Plus, I want to start actually using more reflective beads in our paint as well. We've kind of gotten away from it, and we're going to refocus on that. Plus, you'll see in here actually some concrete replacement actually on Clinton Street over to the, over to the right. Next one is actually just showing some more patchwork we have. Every time something's dug up, we have to focus, we have, as soon as something's dug up, we have to already start planning, when's the contractor going to come in and restore it? That's our first priority. So, we try to build up a couple as we go, so it makes it more, so the mobilization costs, and he comes in and they can whip it out, but we're already planning that and trying to minimize and make the holes as small as possible, but we have to make it also large enough for the safety of the crew down there, because we have to have a certain, for so many feet down, we have to have such a wide opening, or we have to have trench boxes in, because believe it or not, OSHA, they love municipalities. They love going by and watching and see if we have trench boxes in. So, what you see in this slide is some of the repairs we have done most recently. Next one actually is lead service replacement. You've heard me say this probably every DPW report. This actually shows, you can see the picture, all the way over to your right, that is, that is what they call a lead gooseneck. You see that ball right there? Looks like a ball. So, when they used to do it, they used to actually, so a guy would be down there, and it would be, he would actually heat it up, and he'd have a cup there, and they would get it up to a certain, and he would just take his gloves and just start patting it around, and that's how they made the connection. So, really, that thing, you could just, if you heated it up, you could just slip it right off. But that right there, that lead, that's that, that portion of lead that the state now says is a whole lead service. Prior to that change in 2018, it had to be a lead from one point all the way, and that's what some communities did. For example, Grand Rapids did that. Lead was cheap, and it was cheap, but also it was, it was a metal that didn't corrode. So, if you think about it, it was, when you put in the three-quarter, you still got a three-quarter. So, it made sense at the time, but unfortunately, it started leaching. So, what staff's doing actually is every time we do a resurfacing project, we are replacing the services underneath there. And according to the state of Michigan, we have to go within 18 inches into the basement. You can see from these pictures, us replacing it, so that, going back to that lead, that's actually the wrong way to tap a vein. You're supposed to tap it to the side, so all the way to the left is a proper tap, and then actually has it going into the basement. Here's some resurfacing projects through the engineering department. You can see Kalamazoo, we had to do some curb work there and some patching, and Kalamazoo finished on the bottom. You can see Prospect, that was actually for a resurface project, we had to actually adjust... We had to actually adjust and made that back to where it originally was. So, great improvement on that. Plus, we had the Phoenix corridor and the bike path you can see over to the right. Some of the major streets that are going to happen, we have actually still scheduled some heavy rip wrap, about 80,000. We got Cape Seal for baseline, North Shore Cape Seal from Grand to Dykman, Superior, Superior Cape Seal from Cherry to Center, Aleworth, Monroe to Indiana Cape Seal. Some of the projects actually are coming up. Again, engineering photos, this actually shows that Phoenix Street project. The city did receive 144,783 in federal dollars for the bike path and 320 in small urban fund for the resurfacing of that road. Next slide actually shows the fencing that was put in recently, maybe about a year and a half ago, we did in the easement with the property owners there, who own Bear, Bear, Bear Park. We had to do a easement, a park easement agreement. Within the agreement, we had to define actually between the public and the private property, and that's what that fence is for. The next slide to your, or the picture over to your right is the, we had some issues actually at Newcombe Beach. The discharge was starting to undermine the stairs, and we had to rebuild or reshape that, and I had to put some shoring over to the side. So, once we're completed, I think we have more sustainable out, outfall there. Anytime you see those sculptures going up, we've got to put a, some kind of foundation there, so they don't just, we can't just put them up everywhere. So, we have to go and see what's, what's exactly located there, what kind of infrastructure's underneath there. We take the time of even asking the questions, how much do these things weigh? What is the area? So, it does take a little bit of, we try to actually try to get the areas where the vegetation, so it makes it a little easier for us, but the one over to the right was a little bit more of a challenge, but I think the engineering department does a great job. And next one is just actually, we use Roadsoft for asset management. We also use that to keep track of all of our Pacer ratings on there when we do improvements. It's our asset management plan, and this, we also use that actually for, to do analysis for some of our studies we do, some of the speed studies we've done recently. GIS, Ryan Bosher. I can't say enough about this young man. I've worked with, I've been in the, been in municipality work for 25 years, and this man is more than just a GIS person. He's researched, when he puts a map together, there's, there's data there, and he puts that data together. He doesn't, doesn't make a map, he's not, he's not just making a map and collecting it. When you tell him to make a map, he's doing all the research, too. So, a lot of these maps you see, that, that young man put them together and did all the research. He's quite the, and you can see in the DPW, he's, he's not just doing DPW work, he's doing planning, zoning. I just go up to him and say, "Ryan, what do you got going on?" And he'll just start rattling stuff off. He's just an amazing young man, can't say enough good things about him. The next three slides, and I apologize for the number of slides I have here, I want to state that, that's why I'm trying to go through them, but I've got a lot of guys that put a lot of work into these slides, so I want to make sure we...
This is good. It's good work.
And Ryan does that. He goes first quarter, second quarter, third quarter, and these are just the list of all the stuff he does. And does a, next one, second quarter, list of all the maps. Like I said, he, he does all the research and puts this in. Quick go through those. The third quarter one, what we're going to see actually in the parks, I want to touch on this a little bit. Ryan put together a plan to consolidate all the, all the park, I mean, the beach signs. So, you're going to see now beaches, what, we're going to have the, what signs we could consolidate. So, the next time you go to the beach, take a look at the signs, but those ones there, I think we did a pretty good job consolidating them all. And the one thing we, we do have to, and I'm going to do this myself, if somebody says, "I need to put a sign there," I'm going to go, "Ah, ah, ah." I'm going to try to push back as much as possible, because I think we just had a lot of aluminum there.
Yep.
And I want to make it to, I think, I want to cover everything, but still put out the information.
Yep.
We're going to miss some things, but I would rather miss them once in a while than I would actually to put just another sign up. And that's just my opinion. Page down, third quarter, and again, Ryan just puts out so, does a great job. All the maps, even for the road resurfacing projects, Ryan puts all those together. Electric, electric division, we, electric division, we have 8,500 services. We cover about 40 square miles. We have 150 miles of overhead electric lines and 10 miles of underground. So, that, that's a lot. The operating budget for just that department is 19.5 million. Currently, we're working on designs for the construction of a new substation, and we have infrastructure costs for that new substation, probably around 6.5 million. And staff is working with NPPA right now and a consultant to come up with a solar feasibility study in hopes, when the study comes back, we might be able to put in a solar array where we can, in the future, maybe cut down on our peak purchases, because in the summer, that's when, that's when we're peaking. So, if we could utilize that and collect and store that energy and not have to purchase power during that time, there's a chance we can actually lower our, and that's what we're looking at, lowering our rates, of course. Next area just shows our, our coverage area for the electric area. It's a pretty large area. Next one is the capital improvement plan. We do have the AMI project, we're still waiting for the meters. Once the meters start coming in this spring, we'll mobilize the contractor and we'll start doing a complete meter changeout. And that should be completed the summer of next year. This is a list of, I had, I had the staff and I remind them about once a quarter, they submit me quarterly, quarterly reports, and this is all the things that they, they've done just out of one quarter. I didn't include all the quarters for them, because there've been, tried to cut, tried to cut down some slides. Here are just, they do a great job sending me pictures now. Now, we have to actually start cutting down of how many pictures we have. So, you can see everything from installing underground to repairing some phase on Blue Star, new service installs, some transformer installs, changing broken cutouts, and installing a temporary service for the Holiday Inn. Here again, some more pictures, some free, some three-phase work at Bronson, and some lot upgrades, primary outage at Menards. Car versus a pole repair. I thought that was funny. And just pole top rescue training. We have to do a lot of training, that's actually required once a year, so that, that, you see them up there, that actually is a, it's, it feels like it's a regular person, so they have to practice actually getting that person down. And repair crossarm, steel center, it's a 1,500 KVA upgrade, and the steel center, another K, 1,500 KVA upgrade. And again, staff, this is actually pictures from the mutual aid. We had staff actually help, Sturgis, Sturgis got hit earlier this year. We said staff, it's mutual aid, we have, we do send them an invoice, and they did, actually the invoice just cleared, so it's not, it's not free, but we have a mutual aid agreement, and we had two staff members there. The whole intention of that is you send them out, because one day, they remember that if you send people out, so we might need it someday, and I, I just want them to remember that we like to help, so. And here's our new car charging stations. I just sent actually an update to Kate and Griffin, I just received it earlier today. Starting to get more uses the station, they have separated the east and west. We actually get a report of how many uses. I believe it's actually the east one that gets the most usage. Seems like it's picking up surprisingly quite a few charges. The, the west one, not so much, but we do have, we do have through the congestion mitigation and air quality grant, we have actually chargers that we're going to be purchasing, and we just got to pick another spot. We're envisioning something north of, north of Phoenix, so pick another, pick another parking lot, I think it's somewhere probably around the city hall area, and pick two more charging stations here. And again, more pictures from the guys actually doing secondary repairs, early morning outage on 77th and the beach drive, replacing two poles. Again, the guy's doing more work, transformer at the, setting a transformer at the library. Then replacing a bad pole mount on North Shore and replacing pole and secondary after a car accident. Next slides will be the, the streets division. We have 37.47 miles. We have approximately 50.64 miles of sidewalk or non-motorized pass parking lots. We have about 12, that's 638 pay-to-park spaces plus 217 free, equalling 854 spaces. Parking lots downtown, seven lots, 441 total, 19 parking lots and 1,295 spaces. On-street parking downtown is 421. Next slide is actually the capital improvement plan for major streets. And the next one, I had to do three slides just to make it clear, but that's the, that's your local street capital improvement plan, so the next three slides. This will be once a year, I'll be presenting this to city council, and the next, for more of the next budget, we'll have another work session where we go over the whole capital improvement plan again. Next slide here is the, just work orders from the guys, they, they put them all down. Next year, I implemented a different work order program where I'll be able to now be able to split it out, more of a pie graph, and be able to show more percentages of where the guys are working at instead of this. And again, the next slide, coal patching, helping the water department installing, removing signs, building signs. We do have our own sign machine, we put the vinyl on it so we can crank out signs quicker. That was a purchase a few years ago. We've made specialty signs, Brian's sign recently that was given to him, that staff, staff did that, so. And again, more work orders from the guys in the streets. Here's some of the pictures of some of the things that the guys do, like for example, you saw the sign getting put up. Those ones over to your right to the top, the W11-2, the blinkers, staff does those on internally, so we buy the kits and we install them. One recently down by North Shore, just closer to the beach, that's the newest one. But we had to make some modifications to the one across Kids' Corner, and you'll see actually staff drilled holes through it to let the wind go through, because during the wintertime, it actually blew the sign through it right down the hill. So, the staff was wondering if they could actually patent that, and I don't think they can, I told them they couldn't patent something for drilling holes through it, but it was a good idea.
Give it a go.
Oh, I'm sorry. Went a little too far. Yes, I did. Parks division, we have 26 parks, we have 87 acres of parks, and we have 33 acres at the cemetery. So, 19 public parks and seven beach point accesses. We have no full-time employees at this time. It was, it was originally underneath the operations manager during, we'll be, we'll be doing a restructure, and we're going to have actually a parks manager, where he's going to be, he's going to actually be taking over the, also the cemetery sexton, so he'll have a full-time employee doing that. In addition, he'll oversee all the seasonal hiring, plus the parks commission, parks master plan, which will be scheduled for next year, so a lot of good things coming up. Plus, we have the Kids' Corner, and he'll be heading that up as well. Next one is actually the capital improvement plan for the parks. And again, like I stated, staff is working with Edgewater Resources on Public Input Mall for the design of Kids' Corner. Currently, we're reaching out to school kids right now to get their feedback, and we'll be presenting that or bringing that back and have some more open houses, get the public feedback, and we'll be bringing something back in front of it. Similar what we did actually for the Monroe Bluff, the same public outreach, similar also what we did with the beach bathroom master plan as well. Streets and parks, shows pictures of some of the things staff does, staff did. For example, we always get washouts here, this was before we did the restructuring, the center one actually for Newcombe. Staff had to go through and regrade, we get calls because it dug out. Staff installed some of the bikes here, and here's some pavement marking over to the side that they did. Anytime there's a windstorm, staff's out there clearing it, digging out, clearing it out. You see staff actually doing some work over there by the marina, and then actually doing a burial and doing some work over there. Next one is actually Shawsa, and this will be just the distribution, water sewer distribution. We have, we maintain 109 miles of water main and 101 miles of sewer. And our service area covers over 60 miles. Currently have, we have 15.9 million over the next 20 years. We have to budget 625, that's the first year, and incrementally it gets larger for the replacement of lead services. We have 6.9 million for the next seven years and that, to replace the concrete stand pipe that serves over 11,300 residential businesses, residential business and school customers. Got a million set aside for high water issues, actually at the wastewater treatment plant, and we have 41 million actually that's outside of the seven-year plan for more infrastructure worth that's, needs to be done as well. Next one actually just shows the capital improvement plan for the water filtration plant plus water distribution, where we're, we have listed on there reservoir, our repairs that need to be done, covert booster station, and the concrete stand pipe is in there as well. Here's a list of all the assets. We have 17.8 million in assets at the Shawsa side. That doesn't include actually your distribution system and your, and your collection, gravity system, collection system, but it shows actually the brick and mortar that you have for the, like the wastewater plant and the water plant. For example, the water plant, that's at a value of 10.7 million. Then you got up there actually, the headworks building over by the wastewater plant, that's 1.9, almost 2 million there. Here what we have is a comparison of different rates throughout, with Northwest Ottawa Water System, Grand Rapids Water System, Wyoming Water System, Holland, et cetera. Now, the one thing, caveat I always like to put on when, when we start comparing actually rates, is compared to, I compare, if you just take a number, you compare in apples to watermelts. If you're actually comparing rates, you have to actually compare to, for example, how much, when was there your, your assets put into place? When were they actually installed? How many miles of water main you have? How much outstanding debt you have? It's an easy thing to say, "Well, this rate is higher than the next," but are the, is that, this other rate, are they actually getting funds from their general fund? Ours, we don't. Ours is an authority, we only can work on actually the revenue we take in. So, I, I think it's sometimes a good tool to see where you hit, but it's not the say-all, do-all. But here is, here is actually, like I said, it's a list that goes back to 2019 that I did, and the next slide again goes over your, it says, it's, it's good to see, but it doesn't, doesn't show you the whole picture. You have to actually be exactly the same, and it's, and it's almost impossible to do. Don Lund actually, who does, she's with UFS, and she does rate seminars throughout the whole United States, and she actually did our rate study for us. And she had a community once that said, "Well, we just want to go by what our neighbors did." And she said, "Well, I have to politely back off and this, or desk back out and say, that's, I'm not going to then represent you," because she, she warned them, and again, they came back to her within three years and said, "That's probably wasn't a good idea." So, like I said, it's a good reference tool, but you have to, you have to take it into consideration that your assets, you got to make sure you're comparing plan to plan. Here's the water sewer, showing some of the guys working, doing some repairs, water main breaks late at night, that's the ones that were recently done, some hydrant repairs over to your right. That's the Vector truck, that's the old Vector truck with a new one coming in within the next year. We use that all the time, water main breaks, cleaning sewers, catch basins, that's a workhorse, very important actually during water main breaks. This next slide goes over some of the work that staff's done, reported over the quarters, cutoffs, what they responded to, number of missed digs. Again, same thing. Here's actually the wastewater treatment plant. No, I'm sorry, this is the... the wastewater treatment plant. No, I'm sorry, this is the water treatment plant, my apologies. Water treatment plant. I've got actually listed here in my notes a value of, I think I, I've got a value of the water plant at twelve, twelve million, twelve point nine, almost thirteen million. And we have about probably, yes, we have, we do have one big project scheduled, but it's not until 2020, 2041. You can see from this slide that the plant itself is designed at seven million. Right now, our firm capacity to the highest high-service pump we have is five point four. Every plant is, they call it a firm capacity. You have to, whatever restricts you. And right now, our restriction actually is the intake. So if we redid our intake and put a new intake in, a redundant one, we'd be able to go up to seven MGD. Right now, we're not, we don't need to. But in the future, that's something we have to, when we start building out more in the authority side, like Caskill, South Haven Township, that's something probably they're going to, we're going to have to look at during that time.
And we already laid the pipe for that.
What's that?
And the pipe's already there.
Yes. And it'd be good, actually, we don't really have a redundancy actually to the intake plant, the intake. We have one intake. So not only probably to get one to increase your capacity to the plant, you need, you need something redundant. We have it inspected every year, and that's great, but it's just in a visual inspection. So I'm sure it's fine, and they think they would have said something if they seen structural fractures or something, but it's probably, like I said, 2041. Here actually, the next slide is your bacteriological sample sites. These are the sample sites we take once a week within the city. City Hall, the Police and Fire, South Haven Township Hall, DPW, Bob's Processing, Elevated Tank M-140, and Hydrant Two Seventy, Forty-Eighth and Forty-Second. This actually, your next slide is your operation manager, it's called your MOR, Monthly Operation Report to the State of Michigan. Richie, who is our, Richie Garcia, he's our plant superintendent. He's required to send this report out to the state once a month. We have to track everything from timing of our filters, how much filter rinse water we use, the pounds of chemical we use, the pounds of chemical we have on hand, and what analytical we actually test for, the pump times, run times. Everything is in here from the alum, how much alum we use, hypochloride, fluoride. And next slide, actually shows some of our totals of our chemicals, our total gallons pumped to. So, a lot of this is, it's a lot of tracking, and Richie and his staff did a great job. And, next slide. Next slide is the wastewater plant. Wastewater plant, we have a hundred and one miles of sewer lines, thirty-one lift stations. Current, our average is one point three million gallons, and our design capacity is two point one nine. As you can see, actually, it's really close to, we're really close actually to our capacity side, and we do hit over it. We have recently, when we had a sanitary sewer overflow, I reported to City Council it was that one rate event, and the clarifiers, everything. And that'll be a picture you'll see here shortly. We do have in our, our master plan, we have about eighteen point three million dollars worth of repairs that, repairs that need to happen at the plant. We've got to remember that plant was built in 1933. We still have stuff there, a lot of it there, or at least the half of it, half of that plant is still 1933. And that's what we're dealing with. And you'll see actually from some of the slides coming up. This is the Capital Improvement Plan for the collection side and also the wastewater plant. Here's actually a blower pipe header repair. The bottom picture was the original, then the top was the replacement. Staff got very creative, actually using some different types of fittings to get more replacement pipe in, and they used some stainless instead of cast. So that thing will probably be reused when they rebuild it. So, a lot of the, all the slides you're going to see is what was done in-house and repaired by staff. This is something everybody wants to see right before breakfast. This is your flushable wipes that everybody calls flushable. And they're not flushable. This is what happens. This is what staff pulls out at a regular, I hope nobody was wanting to get dinner afterwards, but. This is Kalamazoo Lift Station in-house pump seal repair. It actually is still the same pump. It actually shows that, that picture in the middle is the pump. Actually, the seal is broken, and the one over to your left is repaired, and that actually is the, the pump pulled out over to the right. Methane flare regulator repair. It, we had to, it was, we had to be very creative to find replacement parts, but staff was able to do it, and they showed actually them pulling the diaphragm off and then making the repairs and finding parts to get that to work again. New BioSalads thief hole assembly and drain cleanout. New BioSalds circulating pump install, again, all done by staff in-house. That's a light night repair at Bailey Lift Station. And that's a staff, next slide is staff creating actually a better access, bypass access for Bailey Lift Station. This is actually, again, staff replacing a seventy-five horsepower motor, rebuild replacement. Some of the actually challenges we have, and that's what this slide demonstrated, some of this old, like the clarifiers, how old it's been in place and everything is pitted, and how the algae and everything just sticks to it. Staff can clean it off, and then it sticks right back to it, so it's a constant state. Hopefully, with some of the upgrades that I mentioned, that eighteen point three million, you'll be able to have something. Right now, that, we can't take anything down to repair. You would think we could take something down to repair it, to do maintenance on it. You can't. Most plants are designed, if you have a capacity, they can take one clarifier down while the other one's working. We can't do that. So some of the upgrades you see there does put us up at a better capacity, but also allows us to do maintenance. We haven't been, they haven't, they haven't been able to do this in years. Again, non-flushable wipes, that is a culprit. Or just not treating your toilet as a trashcan. I always tell that to people. My kids, where they would throw stuff in there, I said, it's not a trashcan. Trashcan's right there. Don't flush stuff down there. You know, it's going to... Here's actually Kentucky Lift Station. We took that over recently. Over to your right is, they had some trees and vegetation blocking it. That is actually, and we had to do a part of the takeover, not the takeover, sorry, the turnover of the lift station is the, the community that surrounded it had to do an assessment actually to us to do the upgrades to it for us to take it over. And what you see here is a failed check wrapped, and again, non-flushable items. You'll see there's a reoccurring theme actually throughout the presentation. As I mentioned before, is the overflow of the clarifiers, that actually is this clarifier overflowing and draining out to the sides. That's, what's, what you're not seeing is there's troughs underneath there. The water's way over there. There's these troughs that the water's supposed to hit, and slowly, it's, it's not. They're, they're over, and everything is, we had a sanitary sewer, we had to report it to the state. High-flow vents, wash-down dormant. This is staff doing some work here. BioSalds drying bed. This is staff actually cleaning the drying beds. Prior to Forrest taking the job, Forrest then decided that staff could do this, and staff in-house cleaned all the beds. The next, that's a couple of sides, so it's staff taking the equipment and doing it. This next one actually is staff reutilizing a forty, forty kilowatt generator. Prior to the, the upgrades at the, at the plant, the plant had a generator on site that handled just the headworks. With the upgrade, we had a new generator that handled everything. So what staff did is they repurposed that and brought it over to Bailey, poured a pad, and utilized that. Now it has its own backup generator. So something that we had budgeted before, staff repurposed an existing generator, and that was just due to staff actually brainstorming during the tailgate meeting, and just how that generator was not being used, and they came up with that idea. All the work done in-house. This was an interesting one, where staff actually installed a little remote greasing system to be able to grease all the motors in there efficiently. And that's it for my presentation. Did the council have any questions or comments?
It's pretty safe to say that we're going to be spending a lot of money on wastewater repair, upgrades.
Yes, yes.
Unlike the water plant that we replaced in is new.
Yeah.
The wastewater, we looked at, the question was asked, do you just move it? Could you move it off-site, start from scratch, just abandon that site? And I don't, I don't even know what, where that number was anymore, but it was, it was gigantic.
You got to think too, if you, and I've been in communities before that did that, where they relocated a plant. Wherever your gravity is going to, you're always going to have just a larger pump station there.
Right, exactly.
So you're not actually freeing up a land to do anything. You're actually now just
Creating another lift station.
Moving everything over to another spot, and now you just created a whole new pump system actually. They're still going to have to pump the sewage over, Grand Haven did the same thing. They had a pump, they had a, the original wastewater plant was in Grand Landing area, which it is now. They, it was relocated over to the, over to the channel, and they just have now, pump station is there, and they have to pump all the sewage over to the plant. And I'm sure at the time, it probably was more feasible, but right now, looking at it, probably wouldn't be. We have enough land there too, I think, actually, upgrade-wise. We're can, we're working actually with Fleece and Vanderbrink, and with the Master Plan we have right now, we could do all the upgrades on-site, and I think it would be more cost-efficient that way.
Right.
But you're right. I remember reading that about relocating.
Yeah, we talked about it, and still, it's gravity. I mean, people have to realize it just, it, like you said, it's gravity. It all goes downhill. So, all right. Any other questions? Good information. So, oh, Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, Joe, this is probably just my own ignorance, but I don't know the answer. Why is our connection fee so high? And isn't that the fee that new homeowners pay when they build a home?
Yes. They're, they're high actually just due to the, to the debt that we have actually for people paying into the system. Current debt we have at the, at the water plant, that's why they're, they're much higher. And actually, the debt actually at, not only that, but the old authority, which is now Shawssa, so those debts as well, paying those off, that's why they're that high.
Well...
They're actually higher actually outside of, in, in South Haven actually, our lower, Caskill is higher, and so is South Haven Township is higher.
I don't know. I'm looking at the list here, and we're by far the highest, and some of them were as much as ten times higher. And it really hurts what we're trying to do, which is new homes development, economic development, and then we're penalizing people, if you want to call it that, for building a new home. And I'll never forget, when I built my home, I got a water bill, and the water hadn't even been turned on, and it was higher than my other house that I was moving out of, and we were using water there. And the rationale they use is the pipe is bigger, even though I never used a drop of water. So I'm not trying to look for an argument. It just seems like we're making it tough on new homeowners.
No, no, I, I, I can't, we are higher. We're one of the highest. I do, and that, a lot of, all that has to do with the debt that we have out. We got to pay that debt. There's, we did look at other avenues of paying the debt. We could have dropped actually the ready-to-serve, which you mentioned, as you made the reference, that you were higher without using. That was that ready-to-serve charge? You could lower that, but then your commodity's got to go. This, bottom line, you need X number of revenues, so how do you get it? Do you get it by set, fixed, monthly fees, or you get it by anticipated revenue from a commodity you're going to have to raise up? So a lot of that is, it's just the debt that we are, that we're carrying. We're carrying quite a bit of debt. But then, but then again, we are, we arbitrarily kept our rates low for quite some time too. Some of the things is, and some of the courses or some of the lectures that I've seen, is you should always be raising your rates. I'm not saying raising them to where you're six and a half percent cost of living. You should be doing two point nine every time. She, Dawn did this little presentation showing a community that just did two point nine, and they really, their large ones was, were four. Then showed another community that went five years without any rates, and then they're doing seven, eight percent rates. I mean, if you stick on it and stick a minimum and watch it and keep a minimum cash balance on hand, you're going to do better or be a healthier fund. And that's what we're trying to build right now. But to answer your question, yes, we are, we are one of the higher ones. And you're right, it is an impediment. We, we actually have tried doing some pretty creative things. For example, if somebody, if a developer comes in, we take a look, for example, the Overton site. We don't say, we try to look at what was the previous use of the Overton site. We give them credits for those REUs. And we did that for Overton, which actually is saving them quite, quite a bit of money. We did the same thing actually for Trail Side as well. It's called indirect connection fees. That was another one we just started, was a forty-five percent. So we are trying to find ways of doing it that don't reflect actually in what you just seen, but to answer your question, yes, we are higher. And a lot of that has to do with debts. We try, we're trying the best we can to do some creative things, like I just said, but it's, it's still a struggle.
Yeah, and just...
My second question would be electricity. Would it be cheaper, has a city ever looked at closing down all of our electrical output and go to a third party, go to an outside private company? Because I have property in Kalamazoo, and the rate on electricity, I believe, is lower than here, and the city uses consumers' electric. So I just wonder, are we charging the residents more? Because we're trying to be everything to everyone. And then my next question is water. Now, I don't know if any city produces or outsources water. I'm assuming everybody has, has to produce their own, their own water. Is that right?
Well, they filter their own water. It's, some communities choose that they have a common well system or, but they filter their own, yes. I guess the first one, I'd like to answer first, the, the electric one first before we get too far. We actually, the city actually buys on the open market. We don't buy through consumers. We actually buy, we're a member of the Michigan Public Power Association, and as being a member for them, we actually buy on the open market through them. So we're paying the market actually as consumers. Consumers themselves purchase power on the market, or they generate, have their own generation. So they're doing both, and so are we. Our biggest challenge actually on the electric side is our transmission costs. Transmission costs are going up higher than your average cost of living. We're averaging about eight percent, but we've seen it a lot higher. The last, next, last year has been up about sixteen percent. So that's been a huge challenge, which is outside of our control. So that's why, and I mentioned earlier about the feasibility study for the solar array, we've got to start looking at generation behind the meter. What can we, what can we do, like for a solar array, where we're not purchasing in the open market for the, the peaks? Because those are the times actually you have to pay the most. You buy blocks of power, believe it or not, we buy blocks of power five years out. We're constantly buying power till we get probably about eighty percent. And then we're buying so much power the day before and the day of. And that is usually your challenge. Your challenge is, did I buy enough power first? Eighty percent at those cheaper rates? And am I buying at this time? I want to buy less? Do I want to trade more? So those are things actually we're doing right now, the same as, as consumers' energy. I'm sorry, I just wanted to get that one. And you mentioned something about the water, and I didn't mean to interrupt you, my apologies.
Yeah, I just keep wondering. I, I don't like third parties, but I keep wondering if somebody can do it better, better and cheaper than our own city. But I don't want to waste everybody's time. We can talk about it privately. It's just, I know for everyone, myself included, our, our utility bills, at times are almost shocking how high they are. And, you know, people can pay off their home, but they can't pay off their utility bill every month. And it's just, it's very difficult. And then I've talked to Chris, who owns stores, and he's telling me, my God, how much money I pay for utilities. And he's an entrepreneur trying to make a business and create jobs in the town. So it's just difficult. But I'm not trying to cry on your shoulder. I'm just trying to get some understanding.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I think the other reality, and I think that's, as we talk to folks, is to just explain that you're also, we're also at a point in time in our history where the pipes are, how old? Sixty? 60, 70? You know, some of these pipes are old, and we're replacing them now.
Yes.
And, you know, our water plant, we're ahead of it. We, we don't want Flint, we don't, we don't want that, you know, we're ahead of that stuff. We're, you know, so, it's an investment, and your point about, like, the hookups, as we've gone through that, you know, the temptation is, well, you just give them away, but at the end, they have to, they have to pay for buying into the system. So the analogy I've often given is, well, if you build a new house in the country, you're going to have to sink a well, and put in a septic field, or, I mean, and to do those two things, last I heard, it's, you know, 15, 20,000, I mean, so, as far as some of the, the ready-to-serv and those fees, part of that rationale is, we have seasonal homeowners that are here three months a year, but we have to maintain the system 12 months, so we have to have that ready, I mean, it's, it's got to be ready. Because if they show up at the weekend, it's, it's, if they come to turn on the water, it's got to be ready to go. So, some of that is built in to make sure the system is sustainable. I mean, there's a lot that goes into it, but, and we can get into that. We've talked about hookups, and try to encourage or incentivize development, but at the end, it's, it's got to come from somewhere. So if we incentivize one, it's going to raise rates for others.
And, and, and I like what you touched on right there, actually, about the assets and the age of the access, and then, and probably, and some of that actually is why some of our rates are higher. I, I mentioned before, before about asset man, the state of Michigan required us to come up with an asset management plan. And the basis of that plan was for, have a professional come in and say, okay, what needs to be replaced in your system, and prioritize that. So, when they developed the plan, and they gave it to me, the original amount and the numbers were so overwhelming, they came up with a five-year plan and a 25-year plan, and we couldn't afford it. I had to actually, outside of the asset management plan, I had to create a 40-year plan to spread our costs over, just so we can afford it. Then, I'm, that's outside of the seven. Now, I'm, what I'm saying is, I created a 40-year plan, that means it's not recommended. What I just did, created, to create it financially, is not with the American Water Works Association. I tried to, I remember when the asset management plan came out, I tried to convince, not convince, where I was, when I was talking to the engineer, I was like, well, can you have a plan that's 50? He says, we can't recommend that. I can't in good faith present a plan to you, because your assets are well beyond, they should have been replaced 15 years ago. So, and this isn't just this community, and that's what we're seeing right now. You're seeing, actually, a lot of, just start searching, for example, like rate increases, you'll see hits coming up on Google, and a lot of them are in Michigan. And a lot of that has to do with some of the coming changes about the lead service replacement. That's going to be a challenge. We might be getting money coming in, it's still not enough. I don't care what kind of number they're coming up, we're looking at 15, 15 and 1/2 million just to replace ours. It's quadrupled that for Grand Rapids, but that's the cost right now. Now, if I have everybody that has to do it across the, across the state, what does that mean? Prices go up. That means that 15 million just turned into 25. I don't know yet, but it's a good possibility, because now I'm going to be trying to, I try to get, well, how many contractors I have? Well, I only have one, well, he's just going to throw numbers at me. Well, I don't want to do it, but here, how about this? And I have to accept it, I go, well, okay, well, well, I guess I'm going to do that job. And that's some of the challenges we're running into. And that's across the nation. We've been talking, at least on, in the water side, what to do about this. This infrastructure, a lot of it was put in in World War II. We had a big push then, they were putting in stuff left and right, but then it just sat there. And a lot of times, it's underneath the ground, so people don't see it. What people want to see is nice new asphalt. That's pretty. They don't care what's underneath the ground, which, why would they? Because it's underneath the ground, unless it fails, then it's a problem. But if we don't have the money set aside to even do those repairs, we don't want to everybody in a situation to where, well, I just had this water main fail, but now I have to wait for a bond, because I don't have cash to repair it. And that's where we were getting close to. If we have ever had some catastrophe that happens, for example, like a concrete stand pipe that just fails or crumbles, we're under a boil water notice for a few years, until I can probably get something put together. We don't want to be in that situation.
No, for sure. Good update. Anything else? That's it, thank you, appreciate it, good update. Alright, that's that. Next, citizens of the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda, for those that are still here. If anyone would like to talk, come on up to the podium, state your name, state your address, you'll have five minutes. Good evening.
Hi, Nancy Nat, 125 Elkenberg. I'll try to keep it short, but I won't be at the next meeting, so I wanted to try to bring this up now, with regards to Overton and the different phases. Phase two is not supposed to commence potentially until 2030. So when Monique was here, talking about the food truck business, I started thinking, why can't we utilize part of the Overton project to put in a site where people in our neighborhood can start their own businesses? Whether it be food trucks, coffee shops, you know, all these mobile units that they could put in along the Cal Haven Trail, and we can start to revitalize our neighborhood. And I think it would work for many reasons. First of all, the location next to the Cal Haven Trail, the contamination would be contained, because you'd have a barrier there of either asphalt, or whatever you would put. And I, I really would like to see more excitement in the neighborhood, where people like Monique or other people who want to try to start a business can put in a mobile unit of some sort and try this out. We have up to nine years to see if this would work. The location, to me, is ideal, and I posted it on Facebook, just to get a sense of where people would be at with it. And I would, overwhelmingly, people thought it was a good idea. And I would like to ask that Ryan Cervetis, who most of you know as a Realtor in town, but he's done a lot of work, and is head of a lot of different organizations, and he's really taken an interest in neighborhood businesses, and has statistics on how it revitalizes neighborhoods. And I would like to be able to present something on the January 17th agenda, where he could come in and talk, and do a PowerPoint presentation, wouldn't last more than five to 10 minutes, it wouldn't be that long. And maybe start to rethink, rather than just have that land sitting there for the next nine years, we could start utilizing it, the city could utilize it, and the neighborhood could grow. And it would even entice, whatever happens with phase one, it would give people incentive to want to be there, because they're like, oh, great, you know, I can walk out my door, start a business, or do whatever I want, not whatever I want to do, but it'd be an area that would be exciting for, for our, our neighborhood. So, that is my suggestion, and I'm going to leave this with Kate, because this is what I got from Brian, in regards to, if you want to put it on the agenda. And I also wanted to know if the signed purchase agreement with Habitat, if it's been done, and if so, could they put it on, can you put it on the city website, so we can have it posted with all the other Overton stuff?
Update that.
We do have, we do have the signed copy, and we can get that posted.
Perfect. And that's it.
Thanks a lot, appreciate it. Anybody else?
Dan Agnello, 964 Everett Parkway, I'd just like to clarify, next Thursday's Planning Commission meeting, is that just the first introduction to Overton, or is that going to be the overall public comment meeting for Overton?
My understanding, that's a preliminary. Griffin, can you clarify?
Correct. So, Mr. Agnello, to do the, the official public hearing, there are noticing requirements that would be required. Between now and next Thursday, we wouldn't be able to accomplish those noticing requirements. So at this point in time, the plan is to have a special planning commission meeting on the 16th, for the planning commission to get an initial look at what's been submitted. And then at that point, we'll take some direction from the planning commission on where we go from there. My anticipation at this point is, you might want to keep an eye out for a public hearing at the earliest, at the January Planning Commission meeting.
So this is a preliminary site plan review?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street, I have just one, one comment and one request for I wish it was another way to, for the council to get more input on whether or not the lane diet is really working or effective. In my opinion, it's, it's hard to understand why that decision is ma, was made in the first place. Is, if, if the main objective is to make it easier for those crossing, considering South Haven's shrinking population, there's less year-round family with kids, it's kind of, I wonder why, all of a sudden, that became a big issue, to change the, the lanes there on Broadway. When I look back, growing up in this area, as teens, many of us grew up in this area, attended junior high right there on Broadway, we crossed the street when there was a lot more people moving around. So it's kind of hard to really, you know, understand why that is so important. I know under the previous city manager, he, he didn't think it was going to be a big issue to revisit it, that, that decision. And so I was kind of surprised to hear Bill go through his response, that it would take a year, you'd have to do this, when the last, if I understood, the last city manager thought it would be just, you know, pretty easy, if we wanted to go back and redo it. So, I kind of struggle with why, all of a sudden, I wish it was another way to really hear true input from the community. My other comments was a request for clarity, is with the parking around Elkenberg Park. Bill, this is more to you. I think on the west side already, there's no parking allowed in front of Resurrection Life Ministry. Am I correct?
The west side?
South side.
The south side, yes.
There's no, that's already yellowed out, the curb.
That, that's correct.
So, so they can only park on the other side of the street.
Correct.
Okay. So I'm kind of thinking ahead, because, good Lord, delay is coming, summer's going to come around, it's going to get hot again, a lot more traffic, kids want to park, be in the park. I would like for the council, at least Bill, somebody to really, you know, review that again, and allow the parking to be on the Si Street, which is Humphrey versus Elkenberg, because that's going to cause congestion again. You know, it's going to involve the police more, because they, they, the kids don't have anywhere to park, but on Elkenberg, on that one side. And I don't know why, and who's pushing it, why they can't park around the Si Street or, or any other part of the park, versus the main throughway, which is Elkenberg. You go to Kids Corner, you can park all around Kids Corner. But Elkenberg Park, for some reason, you, it's restricted to the main throughway on one side. Now, it's going to be an issue on the other side, so I'm just trying to get the ball rolling before the summer, or at least get you to thinking, so we won't have this issue with the parking on the other side. So, you know, we need to revisit that, because it gets congested down that area, because you restricted the kids to only one little side of the streets. The Si Street would be the most appropriate places to park, which is Humphrey. And for some reason, I don't know what kind of survey you put out, but everybody I've talked to say, it's going to be a problem with, again, this summer, we're restricting them to that only, to be able to park on that side of the street. It's very congested coming from the school, going down to Monroe, it's, it's, it's going to create more of a problem, so.
Joe, you're down to about a minute, just so you know.
Yeah, thank you, I'm looking at my time. By the way, by the, it seemed like my time goes real fast.
It does, we speed you, we speed you up, you're on double time.
I'm talking slow or something, I, I, you know, it just seemed like it's just doom, 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 doom. But anyway, that's my, those are my two comments, the lane diet and parking beside Elkenberg.
Okay. Thank you, Joe, appreciate it. Now, we can, I'm curious on the parking one, we could dig into that. Anybody else?
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive, first, I'd like to thank Bill and his staff for helping for a few items that I've called on, most recently with regard to a very dead deer in the marina on Thanksgiving Day, so thank you for taking care of that. And it seems like a recurring issue is communication. And that was even mentioned at the Planning Commission meeting at the end of November, having meaningful discourse. And I think the city and the residents need to have a better alignment of how to foster that, because the citizens don't seem to feel like they're informed, and the, the city seems to think they're doing a splendid job informing us. And then the elected and appointed officials get upset when we question it, saying that we're attacking them, but we're not, we're raising a valid concern. As voting members of this community, we have a right to do that. We do not need to be lifelong residents in order to do that. We have access to videos and minutes to make us aware of what the history has been, and to question where the current process is going, and the lack of steps for the process that is thought to be required, to assure that citizens really understand what's going on, what's being discussed, what decision is being made based on what is submitted. And the citizen should have ample time to see that information, not at subsequent meetings, but timely when the notice is put out with regard to them. And towards that end, with regard to the meeting on the 16th, it would be nice for clarification whether public comment is allowed, considering the Planning Commission has shut us down more recently. And with that, also, it would be nice, thank you for agreeing to put the executed agreement online, it would be nice to have any lot split decisions and changes of maps put online also, in alignment with that agreement, as required by that agreement. Another reoccurring problem that I've had with the Planning Commission, not only not following their own rules for notice and having things done, but also putting comments, written, submitted comments on the record. Seems that there is an issue, especially when the written comments are opposed to what the intended vote is expected to be. I've raised this issue before, it was corrected, but then it again occurred on December 7th. I submitted a written submission, which you guys got forwarded to you, there was not one word, to the best of my knowledge, after rereviewing the video and viewing it online, I mean, viewing it as, in real time, with regard to that. And it allowed them to go full speed ahead, reconfirming a decision that was made when there was prohibited any comment from the public. So with regard to respect and having open discussion, it requires the Planning Commission, the City Council, other boards, to acknowledge citizens' rights to speak, not deny them an opportunity to speak, and give them the benefit of the doubt that they've done their diligence, and they know what they're talking about, and that they believe a wrong has occurred, and that they have a right to address it, and request that the elected and appointed officials explain the decision in light of the wrongs that have been identified. Until there is sufficient notice of the material to be discussed and voted upon, we will continue to have these discussions. Does not, and again, this was brought up again with regard to the, the lane diet. You guys had a discussion, and you didn't even take public comment, we're now having to provide it on non-agenda items. And so, we have reoccurring issues. With regard to the lane diet, I'd like to add, I've heard comments, and markings were not, are not clear. So I don't think it should go along as status quo. I think there should be some evaluation. I've also heard that cars go into the biking lane, thinking it's a turn lane. There's not an issue, because it appears bikers are not using it, but if you are trying to encourage bikers to use it, and cars are using it for turn lanes, there's going to be issues. I think getting police reports as recommended would be very beneficial and a first start. Crosswalks, I think, need to be better marked, it's not easy to cross there, even though it's less traffic. And again, I would ask that the site plan for the lot split for Overton be placed- And again, I would ask that the site plan for the lot split for Overton be placed on the public website as it's available. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Going once, going twice. Okay, very good. City manager comments. Good evening, Kate.
Well, good evening, and thank you so much. Gail brought up a really good point that I wanted to kind of ask the council, their availability, because ARPA funding is something the council does want, does need to talk about. Not only do, not only does the city have an ARPA fund, but there is a county ARPA fund where they are taking applications. So I would ask the council, if they are available next Monday at five or five-thirty, we could have a small workshop with the city attorney. Obviously, the public is welcome to attend, but then we can get some itemization. We can, one, educate the council on what ARPA funds can be used for. We can also talk about maybe strategy, about what kind of an application to or do not do or whatnot to do to the county funds, because there are, there is a fund that's sitting over there, but they have six criterion that could be used or an applicant could put in for that. So if, I guess I'll go around and say, is the council available next Monday at five or five-thirty for a very short, like maybe an hour, hour and a half workshop?
For me, it would be closer to five-thirty would work. Five is a little bit too early for me.
Okay.
I was looking forward to another meeting, so I'll be here.
I know. Yeah. Jeff, are you available?
I could make myself available.
Okay. Ms. Wilkins?
Yes, I'm available.
Okay. Joe?
Yes.
Okay. Chris?
I got a kid's dance class, but I think I'm fine.
Okay, okay. I will follow up with Mr. Schlock and see if he is available. If not, again, this will be videotaped, but again, we just want to kind of get this in front of you, because I do think that time is of the essence. I do know that, as Gail had mentioned, is that there are applications being made to the county fund. We do want to know that if there is something we need to put an application for, we need to probably get that in sooner rather than later. So I appreciate your flexibility on that. And I do want to commend council, as well as most of the public of the city of South Haven, for their patience in our transition. I do want to commend Griffin Graham and all of the work that he's done with transitioning over to Best Way from Reliable. That is a major undertaking to change from one waste hauler over to another. And in the course of six days, nearly eight thousand bins recycling and waste hauling had to be delivered. And I know that there were some starts and stops, and thankfully, council members were able to contact city staff so we can get some issues resolved for some folks. So thank you very much for reaching out, to give us the opportunity to get those things fixed. But I do believe that all the bins have been delivered, maybe a few extra for Mr. Reeser, but we'll get those picked up for you tomorrow. We have also worked to go and collect the reliable bins that have not been picked up. So a little disappointing that we are just seeing a complete lack of follow-through from Reliable, but I think this kind of underscores the decision that council made to go with the new waste hauler. So thank you to Public Works for picking up those bins. We will hold those bins until we've got some payment options going from Reliable. But if anyone should have any reliable bins that are hanging out on their street or need to get picked up, looks like Jeff does, we will get Public Works over there to get them picked up. Those are my comments, and thank you very much. I hope everyone had a happy Thanksgiving.
Or Christmas.
And Christmas.
Questions? Comments?
Kate, real quick, just on some of the vacancies that we have, like the zoning administrator, any updates you'd like to share or can share?
I do know that we've got many openings right now and that we're trying to fill. I know that we have a code enforcement officer that's retiring after sixteen years, or maybe after ten years. We also have a building department secretary that's retiring after sixteen years. We now have a couple, we have a superintendent position, Ron Dotson's position, that we are replacing. So we, I don't have an update on the planning and zoning right now, but I do know that we have had that out for some time, and we are hoping to get some applicants. But I do know that it's a tough time to find zoning and planning applicants. They are a very hot commodity right now for most municipalities. So we will keep the council updated, but we do have a number of people who are exiting the workforce, and we're looking to get new people in.
Sounds good. I'll just say, well done on the transition. I know it's been tough. Change is hard. I got forgot, just, I was forgot. I had to call to get my bins delivered. My neighbors got theirs, and I was like, I didn't get my bins. But it was nice to pick up the phone and call. They're receptive, you pick up, they were pleasant, they responded, got it done. Had some phone calls, gave the number, everyone said, resolved within minutes, it was resolved quickly, so that was good. So to your point, I think it's, you know, well done. So far, so good. Thank you much. All right. Councilperson comments. Mr. Reeser, start with you.
No comments.
No comments.
Very good.
No comments.
No comments.
I have a comment.
All right.
I just wanted to say thanks to the city manager, Kate Hosier, for being so readily available for the Ward One residents who were having a lot of issues with the transition. So again, thank you. Thanks for that.
Very good. All right. I just, again, would like to thank Bill and staff. My lights are on, it's windy, I appreciate that as always. And watching that report, I just think people have to realize, kind of, what's government? You know, there's a lot that goes on day to day, and so, I mean, there's, you know, I think we sometimes take for granted, as we just all got our tax bills. But anyway, if you notice, there's not, the cities doesn't, I always say, look at those tax bills. The cities, you know, we don't have the majority of that. But a lot of stuff gets done, I'll just say that. The ice skating rink is open, so go ice skate, get your seats and passes. I got to go get mine. What else do I have? Shop local. Support our shops. Let's take a little money out of Amazon's pocket this year and buy downtown. How's that? Right? Empty your shelves.
Sounds good to me, yeah.
So anyway, they're all open, it's fun downtown, it's beautiful downtown. We talked about the lights earlier. And other than that, we all got our early Christmas miracle, because this weekend, the Lions won and Michigan won on the same weekend. So how was that for Merry Christmas to all of us? So, okay, so before we, we won't officially adjourn, we are going to go into a closed session, and after that time, we will actually close the meeting. So we will stop the public viewing and whatnot, and then we'll come back and shut the meeting down after this. So at this time, I would ask city council to consider a motion to go into closed session pursuant to the Michigan Open Meetings Act, Public Act Number 267 of 1978, fifteen point two six eight, section eight A, for an annual personal evaluation for our city manager.
I make a motion to go in closed session as read by the mayor.
Second. A second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to second? Well, this is a roll call. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Campbell?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Shall we take, do you guys want two minutes to, like?
Yes, please.
Do a break, and then come back, or three or four? Okay. We'll be right back. I guess we need to...